I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. Let's warmly welcome Ms. Siobhan Beckett, Principal of Peak Chapel Elementary School. She will introduce an exceptional scholar who will share an inspiring message with us. After delivering her message, we kindly ask our scholars to stay and lead us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Respect.
There we go. Again, good evening Chairwoman Jackson Lett, good evening Vice Chairwoman Jones, Superintendent Shirley Chesser, Rockdale County Board of Education, all of our cabinet members, Rockdale County employees and guests. I'm the proud principal of Peak Chapel Elementary, Siobhan Beckett, and I have Gabrielle Richmond here with me this evening to share an inspiration. I do want to thank her teacher, Ms. Tanya Wall, for all of her hard work this year with Gabby. Gabby has blossomed. Since me coming into Peak's last school year, I have enjoyed watching her grow and coming out of her shell, and she's done some amazing things in her fifth grade year. So I want to give just a clap for her for all that she's done. Also, I would like to thank her other teacher, Ms. Slotnick, as well for all of her hard work with Gabby and supporting her this year. Special thanks to her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Richmond, for their hard work as well because she has truly blossomed. So way to go Gabby and keep up the great work.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gabrielle Richmond, and I am in fifth grade. I attend Peak Chapel Elementary School, and I will be reciting a poem titled "Things Take Time" by Joanna Fuchs. Things take time. The efforts you are making today, the tasks you are doing, rarely produce instant results. Be patient. Watch. Make adjustments. Polish your plan. The seeds you have planted will bud and bloom at the right moment, giving you even more results than you hoped for. Thank you.
Ms. Gabrielle, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
In the United States of America, tune into the flag. And one for one, individual and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Gabrielle.
You are welcome.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second, Heather.
A motion to approve the agenda has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? A seven zero votes. As we wrap up the 24-25 school year, let's take a moment to celebrate our students, staff, and families. Remember, education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world. Ms. Ball, the stage is yours for your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening Chairwoman Jackson Lett and Vice Chair Jones, Board Member Superintendent Chesser. So this is typically the space that we use for a school presentation, but in May, we are crazy busy. We know the schools are busy. So we're going to fill this space with a good news year in review. And most of these slides are going to be items that were in my department's informational slides throughout the year. So we just kind of put them all together, and we hope you enjoy. Michael?
Well, thank you. Together, let's honor the incredible achievements and hard work of our school community. Board members and Ms. Chesser, please join me in presenting the certificates.
All right. Well, good evening again, and thank you for indulging us with that video. It's been a great 2024-25 school year. Salem High School is this year's Georgia Council on Economic Education's Access Zone Winner. This has earned Team Seminoles and their teacher an automatic berth to the National Personal Finance Challenge on June 1st and 2nd in Atlanta. The Personal Finance Challenge lets students demonstrate their knowledge of personal finance literacy in an online competition with other high schools from across Georgia. For the state finals, students were given a scenario in which they identified problems and solutions using the information given and their knowledge and principles of economics, personal finance, and life. Students presented their response to the scenario and were scored by a team of judges. We congratulate the following students from Salem High School on their achievements with personal finance. Our team members, Rahim Yuba. Knowledge Robinson. Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't direct you. Students, you go come up front and get your certificate, and then stay up front, and we'll take a photo when your whole group is up here. Kamari King. Mekki Johnson. And teacher Tayla Reed. And for everyone in the audience, we will put all the photos on our social media. You can grab them there, or you're welcome to come up behind us and take your own photos as well.
These are a bunch of smaller. Do you want to just take them off for social studies? You got them? No, we're going to do them by school.
Yeah. The Georgia Social Studies Fairs lead students through competition to learn, practice, and perfect research processes that can lead and should be used now and in the future to make informed decisions that impact both today and today and, sorry, today and into the future. The research practices encouraged by local, regional, and state fairs have been included in the Georgia curriculum for many years. Ten RCPS students advanced from the district to the regional social studies fair, and four students advanced from region to the state competition. One student who you've all already met this evening came home with the State Best in Discipline Award for Sociology/Psychology. Please congratulate the following students and teachers for representing RCPS and the East Metro Region. And we are going to split this group up into schools, because if we put everybody together, it might be a little too large. So we're going to do from Peaks Chapel Elementary, winning first place in the district social studies fair, first place East Metro Region Fair, best in fair East Metro Region, state class one best in discipline Sociology/Psychology, Gabrielle Richmond. Winning second place in the district social studies fair and second place in the East Metro Region Fair, Kelsey Anderson. Winning first place district social studies fair and advancing to the East Metro Region Fair, Jeremiah Johnson. And our two Peaks Chapel Social Studies Fair sponsors, Tanya Wall and Kristin Slotnick. Congratulations. Our next group is coming to us from Lorraine Elementary School. Again, this is social studies fair. Winning first place in the district, first place East Metro Region Fair, best in fair East Metro Region, and a state fair finalist, Ethan Cooper. Winning second place in the district, second place in the East Metro Region, best in fair in the East Metro Region, and a state fair finalist, Nathaniel Mura. Winning first place in the district, second place in the region, Paris Bass. Also winning first place in the district and second place in the region, Ellison Kelly. Winning first place in the district and advancing to the East Metro Region Fair, Carter Bear. Our social studies fair sponsors from Lorraine, Valencia Dawson and Trinise Williams. All right. Coming to us from CJ Hicks Elementary School. Again, we're still in the social studies fair winners. Winning first place in the district, best in fair for the district, first placed in the East Metro Region Fair, best in fair at the region, and a state fair finalist, Khalil Marag. And our social studies fair sponsor from CJ Hicks, Sabrina Ashimi. Congratulations. Now, I know this student couldn't be here with us this evening, so this next group is not here from Sims Elementary, because Sims has a dance going on right now. So, but I do want to mention, in case they watch this footage later, that Jamin Moody won first place in the district, best in fair in the district, and second place in the region. So congratulations. So, Mrs. Chesser, which group did you grab? CMS? Okay. And Memorial? Okay. Just making sure I have all my groups here. Okay. National History Day is an annual competition that gives students in grades six through 12 an opportunity to dive deep into an area of interest in the social studies. Each year, students are provided with a specific theme. This year's theme was Rights and Responsibilities in History. Students then choose an historic topic related to the annual theme. For months, students conduct primary and secondary research. Once the research is completed, students showcase their work in one of five categories: a paper, an exhibit, a performance, a documentary, or a website. Students with exemplary work advance from the region to the state and national levels. Tonight, we congratulate our students and teachers for their National History Day accomplishments. And we will begin with our student from Conyers Middle School, winning in the junior individual performance category, second place in the South Metro Region National History Day Fair, and a state finalist, Leila Shot. And our teacher sponsor from Conyers Middle School, Kartisha Cuff. Okay, from Memorial Middle School, winning, and all of the middle schools are in a junior category, so I'm not going to read the junior part. But for the individual exhibit, first place South Metro Region and a state finalist, again from Memorial Middle School, Daniella Tarancon. For individual website, second place in the South Metro Region and a state finalist, Casey Washington. For individual performance, winning first place in the South Metro Region and a state finalist, Sophie Gasset. For individual website, third place in the South Metro Region and advancing to the state, Shiloh Kinney. And we have three of our teacher sponsors from Memorial Middle School, Dr. Lonnie White, Navalette Morrison-Thomas, and Valerie Joashim Francis.
Over here. Up. Big smile. One, two, three. One, two, three, and one.
One, two, three, and one, two. Okay, congratulations. Okay, we are still in the junior category. This group is from General Ray Davis Middle School. And I know, Mrs. Chester, our first student is not here, so if you want to put that certificate aside, but I will call his name. Winning for individual documentary, first place in the region, first place in the state fair, and advancing to nationals is Joshua Buchanan. Winning for the group website, second place in the region, and a state finalist, Brooklyn Eldridge. That's the next name. Ellie, come on up. So Ellie is also group website, second place in the region, and a state finalist. Good job. For group documentary, second place in the South Metro Region and a state finalist, Antoine Aray. Also group documentary, winning second place in the region and a state finalist, Corey Edwards. For group performance, second place in the region and a state finalist, Jada Green. Also group performance, second place in the region and a state finalist, Aubrey Stevens. For group performance, first place in the region and a state finalist, Hasib Yulhak. For group performance, first place in the region and a state finalist, Sunib Unabi. For individual website, first place in the region and a state finalist, Evelyn Basket, sorry. I do know Evelyn was not able to be here. Winning in the category of paper, third place in the region and a state finalist, Carmen Beltran Lozano. And our teacher sponsor for General Ray Davis Middle School, who was also named the National History Day Georgia Teacher of the Year, Matthew Cook. Congratulations. We're still with the National History Day winners, and we are moving on to the senior category. So all of these students are from Heritage High School, and I do know that some of these high school students have chorus and some other things going on and may not be with us here this evening, but we'll call their name in case they hear the recording later. So starting us off, again, this is all senior division, in the individual exhibit, winning third place in the region and a state finalist, Destiny Joseph. For individual website, winning first place in the region, first place at the state fair, and the Edward Jones Investments Award for Excellence in Economic History and advancing to nationals, Micah Frazier. Winning for group documentary, first place in the region, first place at the state fair, and going to nationals, Peter Gonzalez. Also going for this group documentary to nationals after winning first in the region and first in the state, Styles Span. Adding to this group going to nationals, Bryce Span. Another student in this group documentary group going to nationals, Isabella Henry. For group exhibit, winning second place in the region and a state finalist, Kayden Davis. Also winning second place in the region and a state finalist for group exhibit, Alexandria Griggs. Now, the next three students were in the group performance, winning second place in the region and a state finalist, Miracle Arnold. Also Kalen Anderson. And Spirit Waddell. And for the category paper, winning third place in the region, also a state finalist, Micah Browning. Also the category paper, winning second place in the region and third place in the state, Morgan McElwain. And our two Heritage High School National History Day sponsors, William Harris and Michelle Brooks. Hey, congratulations. No pressure, but we want that first place nationals coming home. Okay, and our final group this evening comes to us from Salem High School. They've been sitting up here so patiently waiting their turn. This past weekend marked a historic moment for Salem High School as the Running Knolls Track Team delivered an outstanding performance at the Georgia High School Association 2A State Track and Field Championship. Okay, listen up carefully. After a 10-year hiatus from state champion victories in track events, Salem High School now proudly boasts multiple state champions, a testament to the dedication, hard work, and talent of its athletes. One of the most remarkable achievements came from the Running Knolls 4x400 relay team, which not only clinched the state championship, but also set a new school record with an impressive time of 3:23:55. This extraordinary feat was accomplished by the combined efforts of, and you'll meet these students in just a minute, Jacoby Davis, CJ Franklin, Caleb Williams, Daniel Ward, Ajani Sterling, and LaTerrence Fleming. Their victory in the 4x400 relay stands as the fastest time recorded in all Class 2A Division schools in the state. Which moreover highlights their exceptional speed and teamwork. In addition to the relay team's success, senior and USATF High School All-American LaTerrence Fleming emerged as a standout athlete by winning the state championship in the 300-meter hurdles. Fleming's performance was nothing short of spectacular, as he set a new school record with a time of 37.79 seconds. His achievement not only underscores his personal dedication and skill, but also adds to the legacy of excellence being built by the Running Knolls, as his time represents the fastest 300-meter hurdle race ever by any athlete in any of the three Rockdale County public high schools. And earlier this week, he signed his letter of commitment and accepted a track scholarship to Grambling State University in Louisiana. Where he will compete in the competitive SWAC. And I also want to brag on LaTerrence, because we did see him winning also at the academic honor awards last night, so congratulations. We're going to call them up in just a minute, and he'll be the first one we bring up, for sure. Patience. I'm not done yet. I have a lot more to say about this group. Ajani Sterling also made a significant contribution to the team's overall success by securing fifth place in the 400-meter finals. Sterling's performance in this highly competitive event demonstrates the depth of talent within the team and their ability to compete at the highest levels. The accomplishments of the Running Knolls Track Team are a source of immense pride for Salem High School and for this entire community. Their success at the GHSA 2A State Track and Field Championship serves as an inspiration to future generations of athletes. The Running Knolls triumph at the state championship is a historic moment that will be remembered for years to come. It marks the beginning of a new era of success for Salem High School's track and field program and sets a high standard for future athletes to aspire to reach. Congratulations to the Running Knolls Track Team. And now you get to meet our Running Knolls Track Team. Our first team member, again, part of the 4x400 state champion team, and then also winning the 300 intermediate hurdles state champion, LaTerrence Fleming. Our next team member, again, part of the 4x400 state champions, but also winning fifth place in the state for the 2A boys track and field 400 meters, Ajani Sterling. Part of this winning 4x400 team, Caleb Williams. Also another team member, Daniel Ward. Team member, Jacoby Davis. Team member, CJ Franklin. And our coaches, we want to thank for their leadership and guidance for this state winning team here we have before us. Coach, Dr. Lonnie White. Coach, Elick Jacobs. And I don't think our other coaches are here, but we have Coach Denham, Coach Delegard, and Coach Lambkin as well. Very good. All right, congratulations.
We will now take a five-minute recess to congratulate our scholars.
The time is now eight, no, 7:55, and I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We do have a visitor. This is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. Registered speakers may not assign or yield their speaking time to other speakers. We do not normally address your concerns today, but we may ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topics involve a personnel matter, or if you contend that your legal rights has been violated, we have specific grievance procedure for these matters. Speakers should be professional and respectful as to refrain from using profane or vulgar language. And you should not make threats, slanderous remarks, or engage in behavior that disrupts the decorum of this meeting. By submitting a request to comment card, you acknowledge and agree that you understand and will follow the guidelines for meeting decorum. And public participation, which was listed on the comment card, you completed. I would like to welcome Mr. Jeremiah Hunt.
Good evening. I want to first and foremost, thank you guys for this time, and a special thanks to Mrs. Pamela Brown for giving me this opportunity to speak. It is truly an honor and blessing to be speaking tonight in front of such amazing people. Without further ado, I'd love to introduce myself. I am Jeremiah Hunt, and I am currently a sports management major here. Well, I'm from Rockdale County, actually by 10 Alabama Agricultural and Mechanical University. I am involved on campus at Alabama A&amp;M. On campus, I am a university echo student ambassador. I'm also on the rural court where I serve as a rural escort. I'm also in Collegial 100, the Honors Program, and the Pre-Alumni Association. I graduated from Rockdale County High School in 2023. I take pride in Rockdale County, as it shaped me into the young man I am today. From a young age, I played sports in this community, and I served it as well. I always knew sports would come to an end one day, so I always took pride in serving in it as well. Everything I learned from this community, from learning how to tie my shoe and networking with like-minded people, I'm grateful for all. This community believed in me when I did not believe in myself. This community also taught me to always, always never give up on yourself, and to always encourage yourself no matter what is against you in life. If you get knocked down nine times, get up ten. Stand firm, and always remember, for every dark night, there's a brighter day. I say all that to say this, I plan on one day pouring into this community how it once poured into me, and one day seeing one of those boys, one day like yourselves as well. I want to thank you guys again, and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt, for those wonderful comments. I would now like to hand it over to Ms. Cheser for cabinet updates and her personal updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, and good evening, Vice Chair Jones, and to our board members and our guests that are still here. We will begin with tonight's cabinet updates with our Chief of Strategy and Innovation, Mrs. Ball.
Thank you again, and good evening again, everyone. So I, before I begin talking about my action item, I just want to mention that we are finally excited to announce that we are launching all new websites next Thursday. Anna, it's worth a clap. Next Thursday afternoon, so after the bell rings and everybody is gone for this summer, we are going to launch new websites that afternoon. And we just asked for a little grace, because it's going to take us time to, you know, get into them, and there are going to be things that might, links that might not work right at first, but, but we're going to get them even more fabulous than they're going to be when we launch next week. So I just want to put that out there. So thank you for that. That has been a long project, and I really want to thank our DLSs, certainly our Technology Department, and Michelle Kim, who I know just ran down the hall, but without Michelle leading this effort, it would not happen. And Michelle took on doing, redoing our websites when she first started with us, and that was 10 years ago. So that now that she has, you know, had that first project under her belt, I'm like, you could lead it again a decade later. So thank you, thank you for her hard work in this, because definitely a monumentous task. We have 25 websites that we're converting. So yes, it's a big task. But I'm here to talk to you a little bit about Parent Square and renewing our contract. Parent Square is the company that bought Remind. So Remind, you are probably familiar with, is our texting. It is our platform for texting from parent, well, teacher to home, school to home, district to home, in a texting kind of application, okay? So, and it's a two-way communication tool. So Parent Square is a company that already had a communication platform, really for the rapid communication of email and calls. And then they bought Remind and took all of the great things that Remind had and brought them into Parent Square. So Remind will be going away. Remind will be going away, and the platform will be Parent Square. So what does, what does that mean? Well, Parent Square, you can see by the numbers, they're in 50 states, 20 million students, 130 languages are supported, they have a 99% customer retention, 99, I mean, 97% customer satisfaction. I have no idea what a 1060 spot on the 5,000 list is, but it sounds good. And the S Level 3 certification that they earned in 2023. They're really, and Michael Rosen and I, I will just say, started looking at companies, because they bought Remind about a year ago. And so we started looking into, you know, are there any other companies out there that do this? And the answer is, there's really one. There's, there's one, and it doesn't quite do it to the level that Remind has and the maturity of the product that Remind has. And they're not in Georgia. They're out Midwest and West. So it wasn't a comfortable feel to go with that, go in that direction. The comfort is to stay with the company that bought the company we love. And I can tell you, based on the usage of our schools, our district, our parents, and our teachers, we love Remind. So some of the highlights, though, that Parent Square overall has, they do have urgent and smart alerts, and they can go in the form of calls, emails, or text. And again, that text was absorbing Remind into the Parent Square platform. But they also have posts and newsletters, the automated notices and attendance certifications. There's a lot of things already in our platform that Remind didn't have that will continue. The automated language translation, which is huge for our parents. All they have to do is say what language they want it to come to their phone in, and it automates that for them. So there are a lot of things, there's a whole newsletter studio that you can build within this platform, and it has a direct integration with our student information system, which of course is Infinite Campus. It gives one platform for families with the ability to customize their user experience, even more so than what they could do in Remind. They can set it to do, you know, if I have four kids in the system, and instead of getting peppered all day long by Remind messages, I can set them to get them all at 5 o'clock. I can set them to come to my email all at 5 o'clock. So there are different ways that parents can choose to receive the messages. Now, if it's an urgent, no, you're getting it anyway, we send it, you're getting it right then and there. But the routine announcements, the routine communication, a parent can choose how they want to receive it. Do they want it by text? Do they want it by email? You know, however they want it, do it. There is a very robust app that they can use. And so really what that looks like is this. So before Parent Square, you kind of have a bunch of different things going in different directions. And then with the Parent Square platform, again, it's kind of all filtering into the one platform, and parents are choosing, you know, how they want to receive that information. So it's, it's very robust, much more than just the Remind platform that, that we had. Since they purchased, again, they purchased Remind, put it into Parent Square, and then Remind is what's going to eventually go away. Now with this, with the purchase of Parent Square, they are not going to automatically turn off Remind. They will leave it on for us as long as we feel necessary to make the transition. So they will allow us to choose that date. If we, and that's something that I'm going to poll our principals and say, you know, what, what works best for us as a district? Is it, you know, going clean into the next school year? Is it leaving Remind on until after fall break? Or maybe, you know, so we, we can have those discussions. But the recommendation tonight is the superintendent recommends the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of Parent Square totaling $163,835 over three years to support district, school, teacher, staff, student, and family two-way communication. The rationale is that Parent Square acquired the current text messaging solution, Remind, that is used by district, schools, teachers, staff, students, and families. Purchasing Parent Square will provide a comprehensive solution that includes rapid communication through calls, emails, posts, and text messaging. And you can see the financial impact. Year one is $49,910. Year two goes up a little bit, $54,250. And year three, $59,675. And this is from Title IV, not general fund, it's from Title IV. And the contract has been approved by general counsel. Are there any questions? Yep.
I think I gathered this information from your presentation, but just to, for, to be abundantly clear to parents that may be paying attention, the Remind app that they may have on their phone is not going to automatically update to the Parent Square app. They're going to have to download a whole nother app, and Remind will go away from their phone.
Correct, yes. Now, it will be rostered, though, just like Remind. So, you know, it's, it's rostered, it's not something that we have to say, here, Mr. Kenny, dial into this number and you join. You know, it's rostered according to what classes your children are in, just like the current Remind is. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Is Parent Square user-friendly like Remind was, or will it require, like, a parent who is not text savvy, they can pretty much?
Even more so, I would say, yes. Yeah. And again, what they did, because they already had a very user-friendly platform, and then they took all the great things of Remind and brought it into Parent Square. So you're, it's going to look different, but you're going to have the same ease of use, the same, you know, it's just going to be very easy, easy to use. And, and again, even though it's easy to use, you're, you're going to have even more choices, right, that you can make to receive the information. Because I know as a parent, I got on overload sometimes with Remind. You can get on Remind overload. And then, and that's not good, because if you get on overload, then you just shut down, you don't pay attention to any of it. But if I said, look, you know, I want them all to come through at 6:30 at night, after everybody's been bathed and fed, and I can sit down and breathe, and then have it come through my email, then I can choose to do that, you know? So, so I feel like it's, it's a very robust. And I will say that Parent Square is in a lot of Georgia school systems already, and they're, what they're trying to do is, you know, prompt their Remind users to go ahead and make this transition. I think even Newton did it recently to go ahead and transition. So all of us that love Remind are ready to transition.
All right, sounds great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ball. CFO Smith?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, remaining board members, Superintendent Chesser, Cabinet, staff, and guests. Tonight I'll be bringing the financial reports for the month of April, final financial reports. The revenues for the month are $10.9 million. Year-to-date, we were at $197.6 million, representing 90.5% of the budget. Revenues April 2024 were $11.3 million. Year-to-date, we're at $180.2 million, representing 90.1% of the budget. Expenditures for the month of April were $18 million. The year-to-date, we were, was $180.4 million, representing 81.3% of the budget. Last April, it was $17.1 for the month, and year-to-date, we're at $173.9, representing 84.8% of the budget. And our accumbrances are sitting at $1,077,130. The fund balance is $45,732,526. Last April, we were at $42,628,149. On our balance sheet, our assets are $45,732,526. We've cleared our liabilities, and the fund balance again is $45,732,526. That concludes my presentation. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
And Board, I have just a few other, um, items before we conclude today. I did want to thank all of you for joining me this week as we wrapped up the Senior Honors events. I know, um, yesterday morning I had a chance to, with Mrs. Brown, to attend the epic honor celebration and they're what they call a check and connect. So we appreciate the work that they did to coordinate that for their departing seniors. And then last night, many of us were able to attend Salem High School Senior Honor, um, Honors Night. So we appreciate and celebrate the students who were recognized there. Today was the Work-Based Learning and Youth Apprenticeship signing today at RCA. And there were three students who are leaving high school with employment with their work-based learning employer. So we'd like to recognize Travis Green from Heritage High School. He is now officially employed with Tri-City's Funeral Home and that was something that he started while in high school. Tyler Tucker, also from Heritage High School, will continue his work with Lexicon Technologies. And we know Lexicon, Lexicon has been a true partner in education with us for many years. And then Mikel Wingo from Salem High School will be employed with Lincoln Tech. So we appreciate that ongoing partnership with those companies. Um, we also had our Work-Based Learning and Youth Apprenticeship Employer Appreciation Lunch. That's a tongue twister, isn't it? But I know many of us were able to attend that where some of our employers were recognized during that lunching today. So I would like to recognize our Work-Based Learning Business Partners of the Year. And those two companies are Action Metal Fabricators and JG, J J G Steam. So we congratulate them and thank them for their, um, work with our students this year. And then we had several Work-Based Learning Employers of the Year that were named today. We had David Johnson from VCOM, Talon Owens from Pursuing Performance, Pamela, uh, Pamela Coop, we all know Mrs. Coop from RCA, the Early Learning Center, Shawana Gaither from the Rockdale County Accountability Court, Lakeisha Craft from McDonald's on 138, and Jamie Doan from Piedmont Rockdale Emergency Department. So we congratulate and thank them again for supporting our students. We heard a lot about our Salem High School Knowles today, their track team, but I'm pleased to say that we had students from our other two schools who also placed at the state level. So from Rockdale County High School, we had Joshua Asunowu, who plays third at the state level on the shot put. So we have another state champion there. And at Heritage High School, the four-by-100 meter students won the 6A State Championship. The four-by-200 meter placed second. The four-by-400 meter placed second. The four-by-800 meter placed sixth. And Jory Savage placed second in the 100 meters. The list goes on and on, so I'm going to read all of these names because I'm oh so proud. And Siya McGee placed fourth in the 400 meter. Uh, Morgan Means placed fifth in the 800 meters. And then Jeremiah Madison placed fourth in the long jump and eighth in the triple jump. So let's congratulate those students and those partners in education. And lastly, Board members and to our public, I do want to say that we are eagerly awaiting next Wednesday, which is when all of our seniors will officially graduate. So next Wednesday, May 21st, at New Birth, we'll start at 9:30 a.m. with our Heritage High School seniors. Then we'll have our Salem High School students at 2 p.m. At Rockdale County High School will wrap us up at 6 p.m. And all of those ceremonies will be live streamed on our Rockdale website. And then the following day, on Thursday, May the 22nd, is officially our last day of school. Can you believe it? Our last day of school and early release day for all of our students and teachers. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Chesser. The Cabinet has provided a few presentation on information. I would like to ask the Board members to please review the information. The Board has reviewed the minutes from all Board meetings held in April. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for all Board minutes held in April?
So moved, Janie Jones.
Second, Heather.
A motion to approve the April 25 Board Minutes has presented, has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussions? All in favor? The motion is approved by seven zero. There's no old business, but we do have new business. We have new business?
It already went.
Hmm? The new business, she just presented. Okay. Do I hear?
Hmm?
Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to purchase Parent Square totaling $163,835 over three years to support district, school, teacher, staff, students and family two-way communication?
So moved, Justin.
Second, Heather.
A motion has been made by Mr. Justin Kenny and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? A seven zero, the motion is approved. Last week, the Board voted to place numerous action items on consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action item under the consent agenda?
So moved, Janie Jones.
A motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Akita Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved, seven zero. Under the new business discussion agenda, do I hear a motion to adopt the superintendent recommendation to adopt the FY '26 tentative budget as presented?
So moved, Janie Jones.
Second, Heather.
A motion has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion approved by seven zero vote. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matter?
So moved. Second.
A motion to go into executive session has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Janie Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? A seven zero vote, the motion is approved. It is now 8:29 p.m. and the Board has come back into open session. Do I hear a motion to accept the resignation of Dr. Jarvis Price, currently principal at Salem High School effective June 30th, 2025?
Vote. Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Janie Jones. No further discussion, all in favor? The motion is approved, seven zero. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to appoint Mr. Charles Chavis, currently principal at Memorial Middle School, to principal at Salem High School effective July 1st, 2025? A motion has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Akita Palmer. No further discussion, all in favor? No further discussion, all in favor? The motion approved by 7-0 vote. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent recommendation to appoint Dr. Christopher Stottermeyer, current assistant principal at Memorial Middle School, to principal at Memorial Middle School effective July 1st, 2025?
So moved.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Janie Jones. No further discussion, all in favor? The motion is approved by 7-0 vote. With... They want to clap. With no further business to discuss, do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
Second.
A motion has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan and Ms. Akita Palmer. No discussion, all in favor? The meeting is concluded at 8:31. Congratulations, gentlemen.